There's still more coming.
Sorry. There you go. Thank you.
I brought the whole thing out just about to pick up the.
Yeah.
Are the courts back almost normal?
Really? I had lunch with Tom Brad. I stayed in touch. I've retired five years ago. He says they just started booming about four or five months ago. Just picked up.
That's what we like to see. Yeah, a lot of people want to know where this is. We can't find out.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Monday, June 14th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we are here at our first in-person meeting in over a year, so that's a great feeling. First up on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a request or any changes requested? Entertaining motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda for this evening.
All right, a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a second. All those in favor approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, agenda is approved. Looking on next, Planning Commission Meeting Held Monday, May 24th, 2021. Everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes from that meeting? Any requests for changes or concerns to the minutes? Entertaining motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the Planning Commission Minutes dated May 24th, 2021.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second to approve the minutes?
I will second that motion.
All right, all those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on, we have two public hearings this evening. First one is a Holiday Convenience Store and Auto Care World Service Center. This is a request for planned unit development, concept review on 3.96 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.96 acres, site plan review on 3.96 acres, preliminary plat of two lots on 3.96 acres. I have a feeling most people are here for this one, so just just tell you a little bit about the process. We'll have the proponent come up and tell us about the project. We'll then go to the city for a staff report. After maybe a little discussion, we'll open it up to public hearing and anyone who'd like to come up can come and speak at that time. So would the proponent project please come up and tell us about the project? Good evening. Would you say your name for the record, please?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jack Ammerman with StanTech. I'm at 1800 Pioneer Creek Center in Maple Plain. I am the civil engineer on the project and can speak to any technical questions you have on this. Do I need to speak up?
If you could maybe just pull it forward a little bit, is it?
How about this?
That works.
There we go. All right, I'll start over. My name is Jack Ammerman with StanTech. I'm civil engineer on the project and can speak to any technical questions you have. I'll lead off the presentation tonight, just discussing kind of how we got to where we are today with the site layout and the design of the project. And then I'll turn it over to the owner and the other entities involved who are hoping to make this project a success. So we appreciate your time tonight, and I believe we have a presentation prepped. Clicker here?
Yep.
So we are proposing a joint project, as you stated, for two parcels with Holiday Station Store and Auto Care World, with the Holiday Station being your typical C store and fuel use, and then the Auto Care World being an auto repair shop as well in the parcel.
Is it not advancing for you?
Nope. There we go. So the first slide I'd like to walk through quite quickly here is the initial site plan that we had developed last fall for the site. It had showed a combined spine road for the two uses and also the existing retail that's on the site today. And it joined all the parking lots with a great mode of traffic connecting them. There were some issues with this plan that staff had identified that we worked through during the review process with not a lot of green space, too much parking, and it just wasn't as good a design as we could have put together. It removed one of the heritage trees on site as well. So working with staff and coming up with a better design approach, we moved forward with this site layout. One of the large drivers on the project was traffic congestion on Hennepin Town Road and making sure that we had good access connectivity through the site. So we added an additional access to Breezy Way up north is to the right, so we're kind of rotated here. With that access, we ended up, due to large grade changes on the site, had to re-lay out the site layout briefly. Removed the spine road and created some grade change between the two parcels with a large retaining wall in between. But the good aspect of this new layout is we're able to reduce the amount of parking on site, increase the green space, and save that heritage tree that's existing. So ultimately, a better site layout for the environment and for the parcel overall. The project is requesting a number of waivers, and I can dive into any of these from a technical perspective in detail if you wish. Just to highlight them real quick, minimum lot size, city code requires two acres. The site is 3.96 acres, so we opted to request waiver for lot size on one of the parcels, the Auto Care World. We proposed that the lot line be split at the driveway, which makes sense to split the two uses between the site. At the end of the day, you know, with 3.96 acres, we couldn't meet two and two for both parcels. Secondly, minimum lot width, city code requires 200 lot width for frontage. With the proposed parcel split at the main entrance driveway, the Auto Care World parcel ended up with 160-foot lot frontage width. And so in order to avoid that, we would have had to shift the driveway over, which would impact traffic and impact the proposed parcel split, ultimately creating a worse layout for the acreage issue for the first waiver. The second waiver is for parking lot island size. City code requires that each island is 160 square feet. We have two that are 120 square feet. We're missing 40 square foot there. They're the two islands that are within the parking rows that are just kind of those small bump-out islands that break up the rows of parking. And so there'd be no way to really enlarge those without reducing parking or impacting drainage on the parcel. One of the last items is a tree replacement waiver. And I'm not quite sure that this waiver is necessary. It might be a confusion, but ultimately through the process of development of this entire PUD area, 705 caliber inches have been left for this parcel alone to be planted from a mitigation requirement. And so 705 caliber inches is around 240 trees. 240 trees physically cannot be planted on the parcel and ultimately ensuring survivability of all the trees. And our landscape architect said, well, you can plant them, but they're going to die. So we want to avoid that, of course. So the waiver and what we're requesting as part of the development is that we, you know, plant the amount that is feasible, and then from there go the cash-in-lie option, which is provided by the city. And then the last waiver to discuss, and I'll let my partners from Holiday dig into this a little bit further later on, but the waiver regarding the canopy connection with the location behind the C store, the peaked roof nature of the canopy, which is required by code, and then also having the canopy of the fueling station connected to the C store building. So there is not currently a fuel station in Eden Prairie that abides by these requirements. And I do not believe that you guys have had reviewed one that has met those to date. So something that can be discussed a little bit further later on. From a proposed grading perspective, as I mentioned early on, with the connection to Breezy Way, the grades on the site are incredibly challenging to make the site work. So you can see that we've split up the two parcels with a large retaining wall in between, and there's about 10-foot of fall from one driveway to the next. And so that main road coming down, you can see there's quite a bit of fall there. And just due to the nature of the topography on site, the site layout is pretty much where it needs to be to make the site function. And then finally, the proposed landscaping plan. As I discussed, you know, we are promoting the amount of landscaping on site that is feasible per code to be planted to survive. And then we've selected a lot of, you know, natural species and aesthetic plantings that fit both well with the community and the natural landscaping in the surrounding area. So again, you know, as the presentation goes on and as you consider this proposal tonight, if you have any specific technical questions regarding civil engineering, please do not hesitate to ask. And with that, I'll turn this over to my Holiday partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. You would state your name for the record, please?
Good evening. Frank Jung. I'm with Holiday Companies.
Casey Beaton, Holiday Companies.
Thanks for giving us a little bit of time here tonight. So I want to talk a little bit about the process of how Holiday became a partner in this with the franchise team. Once we... Sorry. As people come to us and look to have a store, we do a review of the, all the people that are involved in it, make sure that it's a good fit, and eventually decide whether we want to move forward with the project, if it's a good project, good owners and/or not. This one certainly worked out to be what we thought was a good project. So Holiday has been around, a local company started by the Erickson family in 1928. So they've certainly built a reputation of quality and the way that these things are engineered now, it's very modern and the, just the whole concept of I've heard some, you know, why do we need another gas station in this? You know, they're not gas stations anymore. They're convenience stores that have all kinds of amenities for everyday life. You know, you look back 25 years ago, 30 years ago, you know, you could go into a gas station, you didn't find anything that was healthy. And now that's what we're all about is quality and healthy and and just what people need to just get by on a quick basis, you know, they're kind of in and out, don't have time to go to the grocery store, that type of thing. They can come to a Holiday and get it. We're different than most other C stores in the business because we've just the, our team has come up with concepts that are different than most. They've been pioneers in some of the food aspects and that type of thing. The continued growth of the C store. Now, as we get into fossil fuels really coming into question, is that kind of the direction we should be going? It's not the direction that's going to be going forward, but it's going to be around for a long time. But we talk about the electric vehicles. All these new stores are now designed with that in mind, so when we design them, including this store, it'll have electric vehicles in mind. How do we go about it? So that infrastructure is already built in. They're not going to be put in right away because it's still a little bit early. But when they are needed, they're going to be set to go. That's unlike any other C store that's in the area today. They're going to be challenged to ever get that capability because of the size of lots and the infrastructure that they have available to them. So it really sets our new stores ahead. And we, quite frankly, we got a lot of our heritage stores that are going to be struggled too to get the, you know, EV in. But as we go forward with our new stores, we're certainly taking that into consideration. With the fuels that we sell, Blue Planet, Holiday was the first one and still one of the only ones that get some additives into their fuels to reduce emissions and, you know, be conscious to the environment. So we feel that our concept is just a little bit different and unique and which makes us a little bit more viable to projects such as this, where there's some different considerations that need to be taken into consideration, so. Other than that, I'm going to turn over some technical stuff to Casey here.
Good evening, Commissioners. So to follow up on previous conversation, just wanted to touch a point on a couple of the waiver items that are more technical, specifically to the convenience store pieces here. One of the items that was in question here was a canopy requirement set forth where city code requires fuel canopy to be connected to the main structure. And so to address that, basically, we take a look at this. We have a corporate standard, which is typically not to include that tie-in. One, largely because of its cost prohibitive, but also from a safety standpoint, with the way that the fuel standards are developed these days, dive in or head in directions so that you have the cars facing the store for security reasons, for convenience for customers, rather than parallel to the building itself. It requires a greater separation from the existing structure to where the canopy itself lies. In a layout such as this, that extension between the canopies would be greater than a span of 70 feet. And to achieve that without additional structural members and elements that would impede the traffic flow between those two components would actually greatly reduce the cost ability on the site to accomplish this. Not to mention just the necessary in-ground footings and structural elements to achieve this. Another element to this is the requirement to have a HIPRA for a pitched roof detail on that canopy to tie in with local architecture. Because of the adjacent strip center and the Walgreens across the street, as well as other local businesses that do not have that pitched roof, the business itself would actually stand out in this instance from an architectural standpoint of with the adjacent businesses in the area. Not to mention on top of that, to put in that pitched roof would actually add physical mass to this building, which would then make it a much more prominent, larger structure and not as low-level sunk into this low grade that you'll see on the site grading plans. And then I'm just double checking. Sorry. I have my notes here. Believe that was it for Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. And then lastly, was the positioning of the fuel, fueling positions themselves being placed on an inward side of the lot versus outward facing. So in this unique instance, what you're seeing here is because of the grades on the site, entering the site, we had the challenges to try and get the layouts to work with customer flow, fire, with response for fire trucks and everything to get on and off the site, which is a building code requirement with circulation for all of the vehicles and safety for everybody involved. Not to mention also a security piece to it as well as any other convenience for the neighbors. In this layout here, you have a building that's now between you and the fuel pumps, which will act as a noise buffer to any noise that you might have on the residential side here coming from the islands, if any. Because most of that sound mitigation will actually reverberate off the building back towards the busy street. So sound dissipate, sound will dissipate back towards what is already common traffic. The, when we looked at ways to try and bring that fuel canopy onto the interior of the lot, the development layout, the site grades, and not to mention all of the setback requirements, the utility easements that are on this lot, made that a near impossibility to get something that would actually drop on here with a sized building canopy that would allow this development to be financially feasible. So a couple points on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any initial questions for the developers? Commissioner, ready?
I have a question for, well, actually, two questions. One, is this gas station set up to serve semi-trucks for refueling?
Sorry, I should have stayed up here. No, this is not. This is set up specifically for local community traffic. There is the ability to service the local delivery driver trucks on the outside positions. So your Pepsi, Frito-Lay drivers should be able to fill up, but this is, this canopy layout is not designed to accommodate anything larger than that than a short, single-frame box truck.
And can you talk in a little bit more specificity as to what's being done to prepare for this EV future? If this, you know, if gas goes away, this is now a charging station? Just specifically with regards to what types of improvements are being made now in order to plan for that?
Yeah, absolutely. So to address that, that question here, as part of the development, and this is a Holiday standard that we are putting forth, is that we are actually priming with conduits to the various necessary positions to support any future EV development, whether it's three positions or 50 positions on site. And the intent here is to have the infrastructure in place to make it a quick and easy changeout. Right now, to get high-speed electric vehicle charging requires about a $50,000 to $70,000 investment per position. To make that financially viable within a convenience store market, the sales inside necessary makes it unprofitable, which is why setting up the site initially to have the infrastructure in place is what we're going forward, but not necessarily the initial investment into the actual EV charging positions, at least the high-speed ones.
Is there a, I can't remember if it was on the gas station site or the repair site, if there's a EV stall in this plan?
We have three dedicated as future noted on to the C store position.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I have a question?
Commissioner, tell it.
Casey, what analysis have you ran to determine that this location is the best location for the convenience store slash gas station?
You say this lot as opposed to
Somewhere else.
Other parcels? So, and Frank and those guys can also speak to this as well, but this is actually a site that we have, at Holiday, have looked at for a number of years. The traffic count on this site is high enough to allow us a customer count that makes it financially viable. The site square footage on the property makes it capable of handling the necessary components. A building of a specific size, a canopy with a specific number of positions to generate enough revenue to make the site develop, development, or developable. I'm misspeaking here, excuse me. But at the same time, the thing that held us up on this site prior to this was the added lot size and the irregularity of the shape of the lot. We were not able to find a way to make this work as a C store only or as a single business only, just because the land cost was, it was cost prohibitive to go in with a single business option. The layout of the lot, the grades, the necessary setbacks, the utility easements, et cetera, et cetera, across the property make it extraordinarily difficult to develop.
Commissioner, say this.
I have a question for you regarding enlisting the community's input. By what process did you present your proposal to the neighbors?
Sure. I think I'm going to bring up one of our partners here, Aaron.
Good evening. I'm Aaron with RJ Ryan Construction. Our office is out of Mendota Heights, 1100 Mendota Heights Road. So to your question about the meetings, we had three separate neighborhood meetings at the request of Beth. This is a strong recommendation. The first meeting happened to take place on the October snowstorm last year. I think it was the 15th. So we had about six or eight inches of snow on the ground by the time the meeting started, but we did have a dozen to, I'd say 15 residents that showed up. The second meeting, we scheduled in January, February, and again, it wasn't negative five when we scheduled the meeting, but as it turned out, it was negative five the day of. So during that discussion and after that meeting, we had another follow-up conversation with Beth and your planning department, who recommended that we have a third meeting. And that third meeting then took place in March, at which time it was, again, nicer finally. So we had three neighborhood meetings where we offered to the neighborhood that was sent out to 140 residents and the required distance around the property site.
Other initial questions? Commissioner, first. Can I get verification that the gas station convenience center is a 24/7 operation? Seven days a week?
Right now, the C store, the convenience store and gasoline positions would be a 24-hour operation, yes.
Okay. Not the repair shop, obviously?
No.
Okay.
Says no.
All right, great. I think I heard some good news at the outset on your PowerPoint presentation, that there was a preliminary plan and you were going to lose a heritage tree, and now you're not. The current plans show that you're still losing a heritage tree in the southeast corner at the intersection of Hennepin Town Road. And so I just want to make sure that that now is, I want to make sure the plans are in error and your statements are correct.
There were two trees deemed heritage trees at the beginning of this project. One right in the corner at the intersection, another up behind where a retaining wall back by where the car wash is. We were able to, through some concessions on what Holiday likes to see on a site and what the grades allowed by doing some things with the retaining walls and our grading, able to retain one of the two. The other one at the corner there at the intersection was too far into the property to be maintained and saved.
And then may I also just add to that, that the majority of the over-sourced trees that are existing on site within that frontage road area is within an existing sanitary and water city utility easement. The city has sanitary and water mains throughout there. So as much as we would like to replace some of that, those trees that are being taken out by the grading, we would be unable to by ordinance because we're not allowed to replace trees within the easements because those trees might harm those utilities. So currently, that heritage tree that's existing on that corner is growing directly over top of the sanitary pipe. So it's a difficult situation from an engineering and a landscaping perspective.
To remove it or to keep it?
Well, it will have to be removed due to the site grading. And so, and also we wouldn't be able to replace it or mitigate it in that location with those easements.
Got it. Thanks. Lastly, could someone just summarize for me and probably the audience at large what governmental regulations, like EPA regulations and things like that, that gas stations have to comply with and receive licenses and permits for?
Absolutely. So in summary, basically, we go through an entire strict process. EPA and Minnesota Pollution Control Agency have various enacting standards that we have to follow when developing a new site and maintaining an existing site as far as emissions. Stage-one vapor recovery, which basically means that anything that's within the tanks, inert gases that are in the tanks from just existing conditions, whatever. As we fill those tanks, there is a vacuum system essentially set up, the one line going in to put product in and another line where it actually siphons out all of those gases from the tank and replaces those back into the fueling truck, at which point it is then taken off-site. The only thing that then enters the tanks is fresh air coming through those vent pipes into the system. All of the tanks themselves are required to have monthly monitoring checks that are reported back to Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and registered through Minnesota Pollution Control Agency Tank Regulation Standards. We put in double-wall fiberglass tanks typically, which have an interstitial space between the two walls that have monitors. So whether it's an interior tank liner or the exterior tank liner, if there is something that comes into play, one of those two has a fault, that sensor that's within those, which is in constant monitoring, feeding multiple sources, whether it's electronic alerts or whether it's alert, monitoring systems within the building, that is triggering reviews. There's line leak detection systems in place between the tanks and the fueling positions. There's spill overflow reduction standards, but again, all of these are set by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the EPA, and then national standards that we are required to adhere to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry, one last follow-up question. You were mentioning the grade changes on the property, and there's retaining walls, especially on that central drive that goes from east to west. The northernmost retaining wall straddles the existing property for that small retail building, and it looks like the retaining wall is on their property, not yours. Is that in agreement with the owner of that property?
So that retaining wall that you're referencing is on the subject parcel for the proposed development. It is not on the neighbor's property. We specifically worked with staff to pull back the disturbance to that retail property, and the developer is coordinating with the retail owner for the development, as there's lots of cross-access easements and utility easements that would have to be worked through. So they are aware of the project and are working with the developer. So they are aware of the project and are working with the developer on those easements.
Okay, so that, the retaining wall I see on their property now is going to get moved away?
It's currently not on that property line, so it should be fully on the proposed parcel for development.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Kirk.
I'm not sure I understand the traffic flow completely, but the perception is that there's going to be traffic flow onto Breezy Way. And Breezy Way, to my understanding, is, is a private road. What is the status of discussions with the owner of, of that property on, an agreement on utilizing that and maintaining it?
So, the parcel for the proposed development is also part-owner of Breezy Way, as it being a private road, and I'm not specific as to the discussions with the, the other owners throughout the development, but they do have legal right to provide an access to the road, and specifically, the easementary and access rights were already in existence for the subject parcel.
Thank you. Any other questions before the staff report? Thank you. Julie, will you take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the request before you this evening is for a PUD concept review, PUD with waivers, preliminary plat, and a site plan review. The property is currently zoned neighborhood commercial, and it is guided commercial in the comprehensive plan, so the current zoning of the property does comply and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As a part of the proposal, which the developer has outlined for you in great detail, I'm not going to spend time repeating that, we've got a lot of folks here tonight that want to share their thoughts, but I do want to go over a few items. The site plan does comply with the landscaping requirements that are triggered by the size and mass of the proposed buildings. As you'll remember, City Code does have landscaping requirements based on the size of buildings proposed. We also, through City Code, have tree replacement requirements, which this development is proposing to meet for the trees that are being removed with this project. The portion of the tree replacement that they're not meeting is the 705 caliper inches that the developers team commented on in their presentation, that is a carryover from previous approvals for the broader area of the Bluff Country Village. So staff is recommending denial of their request to waive those 705 caliper inches be paid in lieu, fee in lieu of the planting of trees, as requested by the developer. There are several other waivers that the developer is seeking through the development process, they've outlined those, such as minimum lot size, excuse me, minimum lot width, parking island size, and parking setback, as well as the fuel canopies. And I'm happy to answer any question about that, once we move into that portion of the presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the project based on the conditions that you have in your staff report. The building architecture and materials that are provided in the, in the plan do comply, meet and exceed City Code requirements, with a few minor exceptions. On the backside of the car wash, there is a revision that is needed in order to make that code compliant. Staff is recommending that change be made prior to city council review of the project, should it move in that direction. And with regard to the information that is in your staff report, there, staff received quite a few letters or emails, communications from residents that have some concerns, those are attached in your staff report packet as well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on those.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for Julie. Commissioner Goode.
Chair, um, to follow up on the traffic, the applicant indicated they got good traffic flow and would make this project viable. That area gets pretty congested, or did pre-pandemic, got pretty congested in evening time, and my concern would be, was, was there traffic studies done during the pandemic or pre-pandemic, which is what we'll see down the road? And I read it in the report that, you know, there are some recommendations where they recognize there's going to be some additional traffic, a blinking yellow light might show up, and a few other things, and it seemed a little loose rather than well-defined, so I'd like some comment on that, please.
Uh, sure, members of the commission and Chairman, the, there's been multiple projects proposed on this site over the years, and there has been previous traffic studies done on those as well. And as was presented earlier, they, their, their initial site plan and traffic study did not have an access out to Breezy Way, and that was problematic, and that, that was really not going to work at all. So we had them revise the traffic study and add that Breezy Way connection. You also mentioned about, you know, traffic volumes were down last year, obviously, because of the pandemic. So the traffic study dealt with traffic volumes from 2016 that were actually counted back then, which was one of the previous proposals. And then they inflated those numbers based on, on, I think it was 2.1% annually increase, which is, which was what the volume showed in the area. And then they compared that to 2020, and then they, they forecasted that out to 2023 without, without this, this development, and then with the development. And with the development, there is, there's an issue with the connection, or I should say the access in and out of that site. It's, the left turn coming in is kind of at capacity with this development. The access coming out on that, I guess we call it the access road onto Hennepin Town Road, has some problems with queuing that would, that would necessitate a lot of those customers having to wait for a gap in the traffic, from primarily in the PM peak hour. So that's why the Breezy Way connection was included, so that there's some relief to that. Coming out on Breezy Way, that's the only way this would work, in our opinion.
I know, when I drove it the other day, the sightlines off of Breezy Way aren't the best to the north. Can't see. Which is what I would call the north for cars coming down there at, at speed limit. That's a pretty limited sightline. Any?
Well, there'd have to be, is it trees or is it buildings?
Uh, I would say landscape and just the curve of the road.
Yeah, and if there is, if, if there would be a problem with sightlines, we would have to deal with that by trimming trees or, or replay, you know, moving them or replacing them.
Some, some of it's the, the curve of the road. You know, the road has a little...
Are you talking about Breezy Way or Hennepin Town Road?
Hennepin Town Road. When you look up from Breezy Way, when you stop, you don't have a great sightline of the road.
There needs, there needs to be proper sightlines, and we, you know, so we would have to deal with that if there's inadequate sightline, whether this development goes in or not, so.
Okay. Then one other question related to Breezy Road. Green, it is a private road. Was it ever constructed to handle the additional traffic that this would put on it?
Some of the initial, actually, we looked through some of our old files, and there were plans in 1999 when this area developed with the residential and this, this whole area. And at that point, there was, this commercial development on the corner was supposed to take access through Bridge Hill Terrace. Bridge Hill Terrace was supposed to extend and go down to Hennepin Town Road, and that was the connection. Some of those areas didn't get built, and the residential area got built first, and then over the years, there was a number of proposals in 2004, 2006, I think there was another one in '12 and '16, so there's been a number of proposals. The retail center was built in that last 20 years, but, so it's always been planned, and as was mentioned earlier, this site has access rights to Breezy Way and Bridge Hill Terrace through, there's an easement they have, access easement. Now, the thing they don't have is an agreement on maintenance, so that would have to be worked out in any regard.
Thank you. Commissioner Mehdi.
I just wanted to take on while we're talking about the traffic. I recall reading in the staff report that, and I can't, can't remember exactly what, if it was referring to this exiting point or the intersection of Pioneer Trail and Hennepin Town Road is rated an F in terms of traffic. Is that, and I, and I also didn't recall if that was, you know, with this added use or if it already is considered an F intersection today, and this would simply just continue to be a failing intersection, but do you recall what the status is of that portion of the report?
I don't recall if they had analysis of what the existing condition, level of service at that intersection, but yes, with this development, the east and west approach to that access is at F, which is, it's substantially over a long delay there to get on, in the PM peak. AM peak, it's not a problem at all, it's a PM peak.
Okay, and so, just I guess to get clarity on the, the city's position on this, is it, is it correct to state that the city feels that because of the Breezy Way access, that would sufficiently address those traffic concerns, or does the city, you know, feel that this is an issue as far as the traffic study goes?
Well, we have plans, or we have expectations, I guess, that we put forward to the developer that any improvements that are needed in, in, kind of in stages. For the first stage would be if flashing yellow operation is approved by Mendot and Hennepin County at that intersection of Pioneer and Hennepin Town Road, that they would pay for that. We've communicated that to them. Also, long-term, the, the Breezy Way connection is critical, as well as, and when traffic does, or if it comes back to pre-COVID levels, there would, there will need to be a three-quarter access placed at that access, at that access across, across from Walgreens, so that left-turning vehicles would have to go to Breezy Way to turn left.
And that would be part of the development agreement, that it would have those conditions?
Yes, and it would be at their cost.
Thank you. One, one other question for Julie, just to kind of help myself and others here understand kind of how the entitlements work. This site's zoned commercial, guided commercial, and per the zoning, a gas station is allowed to use. So theoretically, it sounds like this, this wouldn't be the case for Holiday, but if a gas station could come up with a design that did not require any waivers, a gas station can come here with, if they can make the design work and pay, pay the costs to deal with the challenges and setbacks and make it work, you know, they could theoretically, we could, someone could come and develop a gas station on the site with zero waivers and be, you know, totally within the law to do so.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in the commercial zoning districts, a gas station as well as an auto repair are both permitted uses. In this case, as Commissioner Mehdi pointed out, PUD waivers are being requested. If a design were to be submitted to city staff that provides for a site that meets all of the city standards, then a PUD would not be necessary, but a preliminary plat and a site plan review would be necessary through the Planning Commission and City Council in order to develop the property.
Okay, thanks for just that kind of confirmation. And I guess one last question, and I maybe could have asked this to the applicants, but can we, can I get a little bit of a better understanding of kind of just the, the operation that's, that's going on at the service station?
Is that slide show sort of, please?
Can we have the PowerPoint, please?
Thanks, if you would, state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Renner. I'm, I'm a resident here in Eden Prairie for the last six years, and my wife and I moved over here. We, we looked at over 64 different properties around the cities. Before we settled here in Eden Prairie, we found a beautiful place over on River View, on the bluff there. And, exactly, well, I'm just trying to introduce myself, sorry. And so, anyway, anyway, the, and, and as a resident here, traveling down Pioneer and right at Hennepin Town Road there quite a bit, I always noticed the, the lot on the corner there, and it was for sale for years and years, and I always thought, what a great place we could, we could put a, our repair shop there. My partner, Mike, and I started a repair shop up in Fridley back in 2015, and it became very successful. And, and a couple of years ago, we had a chance to sell it. We sold it and, and made an offer on, on this lot down here, and that's how we got the, the process started. So that's just a little by-way of background, who I am. This is Mike Schaffner, he's the real brains behind the auto repair service business. So I'll turn it over to Mike now, thank you.
My name is Mike Schaffner from Stacy, Minnesota. I'm one of the developers, obviously, you know, going through the process here. As far as the auto repair facility itself, it'll be, you guys have seen 3D drawings of it, I'm sure, maybe not, but it's a 10-bay repair facility, or will be potentially. We will fix, you know, based on needs, we need to fix about 20 cars plus a day, which isn't that many cars, but it's still 20 cars plus a day. We have the ability to do that with 10 bays. We, we will fix all makes and models, you know, foreign or domestic, okay? It's all stated here on this thing here. Foreign or domestic, and also electric vehicles, we do, you know, service, electrical vehicles do need service besides, you know, just the engines, obviously, you don't do much to them, but you can replace batteries and such, but our employees are all ASE certified, you know, highly experienced auto technicians. I already have guys that are set up to work here if this goes through. We are a smaller, we're not like a corporate America-type shop, you know, so, I mean, I keep my prices lower, I make promises, I keep them, I work the shop daily myself, I'm there, you know, overseeing operations. I will also be part of the Holiday, obviously, I'll go through a, you know, a training course to be able to run that, manage that Holiday store. I will have managers that will assist in that. I will mainly focus on the auto repair part, but, I will purchase parts from local suppliers, I'll hire employees from the community where possible, and that's for both businesses, if I can, you know. I worked at a gas station when I was a kid, so, I mean, I will also hire local businesses to perform, you know, onsite services, landscaping, plowing, that kind of thing, any kind of maintenance that's needed, and there will be a lot of maintenance needed in this place. I also will maintain a higher, a high standard of cleanliness. We will take pride in being organized and efficient, the grounds will be cut clean, vehicles will not be stored outside, we have 10 bays, so if there's vehicles that are left overnight, they'll be brought inside. We could put a car in the hoist, put it in the air, and put another car below it, so we could store up to 20 cars at night in the, in the shop. That doesn't happen, but it's up to that amount, you know. The service bay doors will be shut during hours to keep noise at a minimum. We also use electric impacts rather than pneumatic impact, so that's kind of changed in this industry in the last 10 years. So they're much quieter, there's not a bunch of air stuff running the whole time. There are, you know, these shops do make some noise, but with having the doors closed, you know, we're going to be, you know, have a climate-controlled environment in there, so the guys are going to, it's going to be more conducive for the employees as well, you know. They're, they're putting potentially, you know, this is in the plans, to put screening on the rooftop to block the view of all the rooftop utilities, so that's, you know, to code, basically. We also will be installing a electric vehicle, the conduit for that, we, you know, we have plans of installing at least one or potentially two charging stations onsite, we're on, on the auto repair side as well. Now, there's three conduit set up for the Holiday side. Like I said before, I'll be onsite, you know, daily, dealing with the operations of the business every day. And I hope this, this facility is used and appreciated by the community that it services. I've been in this industry for 25 years and have owned and managed, you know, multiple businesses and have had success doing that, so, if that makes sense.
Just one follow-up question, you mentioned, so, so there's no storage of vehicles outdoors at all, but, you know, I noticed, I don't know if it's the entire site or just your portion of the site, there was a reference to about 70 stalls. Can you explain sort of what the need is for, for this amount of parking then, if there is no vehicle storage onsite or outdoors?
There's, there is about 20 employees altogether, like, in the, I forget what it's in, but we had made the initial, you know, presentation that shows the exact numbers of why I have that in there. There was employees, there's like 15 employees total for the auto repair facilities, that's 15 cars right there. I will have 10 loaner cars onsite, which will sometimes be there, pretty rarely will they all be there at, at one time, but they'll be coming and going, but I need 10, up to 10 spots for that. That takes up 25 spots right there alone. An additional, you know, if I'm fixing 25 cars a day, usually, you know, another 25 to 35 spots is needed to do that kind of traffic in and out, you know. And there's some days it might be busier than that, some days it might be slower, but I've worked at a couple shops, I worked at Bobby's Steeves, and they fixed about 40 cars a day there, and they had 70, 72 spots allocated just for repair only, and that was, you know, usually a pretty full-on situation, so I kind of use that as one of my basis for that request, so.
Thanks. Thanks.
Mike, question, does the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency dictate any standards with respect to dispersion of pollutants in the vicinity of the filling station?
As far as the gas station goes, yes, I mean, Casey kind of answered that question earlier, I don't know if you want to come back up and add anything?
Has there been actual modeling done of the dispersion of CO2, CO, with respect to the physical plant of the service station?
I guess Casey could probably better answer that than me, but I know they obviously have stringent rules for that kind of thing, so.
Hi, yes, there has been modeling done, I don't have those statistics in front of me, but within the parameters of the EPA and with MN, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, there are, there are requirements to look at what the impact would be to the local and surrounding areas, and the mitigation necessary, if any, but I would have to get back to you on anything specific with the report.
So the model would take into consideration peak times, congestion, idling of vehicles, and so forth?
Correct. And weather conditions? To what I remember coming across, yes, I don't have that, it's been a couple of years since I've looked at anything.
Okay, and Mike, you mentioned in your enumerated points that the service bays would be closed during hours of operation, how do you mitigate CO inside the facility?
There's tubes that run outside that you have, it's a ventilation system. Can I answer that question?
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, my question goes back to the traffic modeling. I know we said we took results from 2016, and we increased them by 2.1% over the years, but what actual percentage of increase in traffic are we anticipating to see in the area?
Again, that question's probably better answered by the civil, Jack Emmerman.
So I do apologize if our traffic engineer was unable to make it tonight, so I don't have that exact figure for you, however, it is available within the traffic report that was submitted as part of the proposal. There were traffic modeling runs for a variety of scenarios for all the adjacent intersections, and all those statistics are there within the report, so I can't answer that specifically off the top of my head, but ultimately, there are a few truths in this world, right? And one of them is that traffic will increase, and so with the traffic in this area, one of the things that the traffic study did show is that even if this project did not move forward, and this was a no-build scenario, these intersection would still be operating at a level F of service and a level of E of service in some PM peak hours, and that is an existing truth that will continue to get worse up until 2023, regardless of whether or not this development moves forward.
And this is another question, it's not on the traffic modeling, but do we have any data available that tells us currently or in the past, what type of accidents or incidents have occurred in these intersections between breezy way and Hennepin Town Road available?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I don't have that data in front of me, the traffic study I have here, but it's not, it doesn't talk about any accident rates, so I can't, I can't comment on that.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yes, I know this is a little off point in the middle of the summer, but what about snow removal and storm weather and that kind of circumstance where you have as difficult a site to manage as this appears to me to be, in terms of just getting people in and out and getting the snow out of the way? Is that been something you've experienced in other situations, and you have some thoughts about that?
I mean, I don't have a specific plan yet, but looking at the site, there's areas where it could be, you know, put at, and there, that plan would be, you know, obviously developed when the time is needed, but I haven't really put a lot of thought into that, I guess, but I'm looking at the site plan, and there's definitely plenty of room to put snow, so, and if it gets to the point where it's, where the snow gets too much, you take it out of there, you know, so that's been my practice in the past, so.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Commissioner Farr.
A few questions. The existing conditions plan shows a parking lot for the existing retail building off their property further south, I think that got expanded over time, and could you, staff, could you explain how we're okay with that loss of parking now?
Pardon me, can you repeat the last part?
Are we okay with that loss of parking? I'm assuming it was expanded for some good reason, I'm not sure why, and now, because it was not on their property, now these people are removing that parking lot, I don't know how many stalls that is, but I'm just wondering, how did that get squared up with the existing property owner?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as Mr. Rue pointed out in his comments, over time, there have been several plans that have been reviewed and approved by the city council, but never constructed. As you see the site today, it's largely vacant, but for the multi-tenant retail building that exists there today, and there is some parking that exists on the subject site that we're talking about this evening. So as a part of staff's review of the development proposal, the parking requirements were verified for the proposed uses, as well as maintaining the required parking needed for the existing retail, multi-tenant retail site that exists there today. So whether or not those conversations have occurred between the property owners, that I can't speak to as to what the result of or tenor of those conversations might be, but I can assure you that staff has reviewed for compliance with city code parking requirements.
Great, thank you. As long as I got you on your chair here, can we talk about the definitions of permitted use in this neighborhood commercial district for auto repair? There's two sentences about that in our code, one is talking about minor repairs, the other one's talking about major repairs. I don't see a definition of that in the zoning code, so could you clarify, since in the application, they're talking about complex projects such as engine or transmission repair, that's in their narrative, how does that square with you in terms of minor repair versus major repair, which is not a permitted use?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as Commissioner Farr stated, the city code provides for two categories of auto repair. The first is minor auto repair, which is oil changes, engine work, new tires, replacing wiper, windshield wiper blades, all of those kind of, I'm going to call them more routine types of maintenance. The other category of auto repair in the zoning ordinance is defined as major auto repair, and that includes bodywork. So in the commercial zoning districts, minor auto repair is allowed, but the major auto repair, the painting, the bodywork, that type of thing, is not allowed in the commercial zoning district.
All right, so in summary, you're okay with classifying this use as a minor repair business?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rue, their comment about the heritage tree in the southeast corner being over sanitary, or was it a storm sewer easement right now, and they're wanting to remove that tree, regardless of our opinions about whether the tree should be removed or not, is it of danger to the underground utilities?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, yes, we typically will not, we don't want any trees planted over utility easements, because they will eventually, roots will grow into them and can impact them, so, obviously, there's a lot of volunteers, or sometimes people plant them, and we can't monitor all those everywhere, but, yes, we, and these developments, we always ask that they do not put anything over within utility easements, for that reason.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about the heritage tree that's presumably much older than any sewer that got probably put in.
That's always, that's always kind of baffled me, so.
Okay, all right, and then, again, I don't want to circle back on traffic too many times here, but it's going to keep coming up, could I get a clear definition of the proposed three-quarter intersection design that may come into play into the future, not now, I understand, but I want to make sure that I know that that's the intersection going into the property off of Hennepin Town Road that you're talking about, or is it the intersection of, further up the road to the residential street?
No, it would be, it would be a three-quarter access at the main entrance, if you will, off of, so the intersection between breezy way and Pioneer Trail.
Okay, so you're going to allow right-ins, right-outs, left-outs, but not left-ins, or?
No, it would be, the, you would allow lefts into the site, yes, into Walgreens and into this site, but you would not be able to turn left coming out.
Out of the gas station site, you wouldn't be able to go north?
Right, and Walgreens as well.
Okay.
Which was there before, so, at one point it was, and but the design of that has not been determined, we would have to work with Hennepin County as well. The flashing yellow error does provide some benefit, but it may not, it may not, once the levels come back, if they do come back to pre-COVID levels, we will have more problems.
Okay, for the record, I love those flashy yellow things, I think they're great, so I hope that the county approves them. So then, just to make sure then, so if that strategy needs to be implemented, and you can't leave the gas station or the retail center and go north on Hennepin Town Road, then you would either by signage or by wayfinding some other way, find your way up that slope driveway to the repair store, turn right past their garage doors, and go into the residential area, and perhaps or not be seeing, seeing another sign that directs you back east towards Hennepin Town Road?
Yes, you'd go to, up to breezy way, turn right, and then turn left.
Okay, and then hope to turn left. Thank you.
Why don't we go to the public hearing this evening? What I'm going to do is I'm going to run through the names here, and then I'll call you if you had checked yes or maybe, and I'll check with you, and then after, if you decided you'd like to speak, after all, we'll have you come up to the podium. If you could, just come up and just tell us your thoughts about the project, and what we're going to do is try to go through everyone, we'll summarize the themes, probably close the public hearing, and then we'll have some more discussion, probably bring the proponents up to answer questions that you might have, so, if we could, and I apologize in advance for not being able to see the names very well. Beth Buter, Buter, her?
Butal.
Oh, Butal, okay, thank you. You want to come up?
Yes.
Sorry about that, Ms. Butal.
Thank you. The next two speakers, would it be okay if I brought people up to join me, as the developers did, and stand next to me?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
If everyone just state their name for the record, though, please.
Sure. My name is Beth Butal, I reside at 98, 90 Lee Drive.
I'm Jay Stankowitz, I live at 10016 Shadow Pond Drive.
Alicia Reeves, I live at 9673 Belmont Lane in Bluff Country Village.
So prior to three weeks ago, we had never met each other, now we've become fast friends, and we have to be succinct, to respect your time, sort of coordinated our remarks, so I'd like to defer first to Jay.
Thank you all, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Well, I didn't realize how hard your jobs were, or the planning staff, before, this is the first time I've ever testified, so thank you for listening to me, but to the chairperson, to the Planning Commission, the planning staff, and my many neighbors here today, thank you for coming out, I submitted a detailed statement with research and specific objections to the waivers being proposed here by the planning staff, that's in the record, it sounds like you've all read a lot of that. I wanted to just take a moment to recognize the absolute courtesy and professionalism of Julie and Beth on the staff, even as emotions run high. Tonight, as I said, I won't read my full 13-page statement, instead, I'm going to summarize why this issue is so important to me and everyone here tonight. I will start by saying, we fully welcome a commercial business that enhances our local community, conserves our environment, and ensures the safety and well-being of our residents. This proposal does none of that. The proposed owner has other gas stations, he and his team are the experts, we in the community are not. But what's surprising is that in their own application, in their own presentation today, they've provided ample evidence that this is simply not the right property in the right area for them. To meet the business need, in other words, for them to get acceptable profit, they need a lot of things. They need a big service center with 10 bays, they may consider that small, but that's large for us. They need a car wash, they need a 24-hour gas station that pulls in non-resident commuters at all hours, seven days a week. They need a waiver to build a development onto acreage that can't support it, or safely in that matter. They need a waiver to fit more cars into a parking lot that can't support it. They need a waiver to allow buildings and lots to encroach on established setback areas. They need a waiver to place the pumps out front, and regardless of what we heard tonight, it gives us a false choice of either reducing the impact on adjacent homes or maintaining aesthetic regulations established by the zoning that's in place. They need a waiver to clear-cut historic trees and vegetation without replacing them, and instead make a payment so the city would replant in other areas. They need to build an alternative entrance that will bring high commuter traffic volume onto a residential street that serves 100 families and children, including two bus stops, and make no mistake, that those two lanes, not just breezy way, but the one ahead of it, and you'll hear more from my colleagues, it's going to be an issue. And they need to build their service center, and one of the things that I want to just underscore is that, as I understand the plan, there will be some near-time, nearby townhomes that are within 70 feet. So, in long, they need many exceptions, but I don't believe that it's the city's job, nor our neighborly obligation, to consent to exceptions that only serve to allow a larger scale, and therefore, a more profitable business than the site can physically or safely support. On the other hand, this development offers nothing our community needs, and I made a note here, I'm not going to go to it, but we don't need a convenience store, we have Walgreens and walking distance of this that provides far more than they will, plus a prescription pharmacy. We don't need this gas station, we have two, literally within a three-mile drive, and from a mileage standpoint, about a one and a half miles away. We don't need a service center, especially one with 10 bays of capacity, we get our cars serviced once a year, and we have four options, literally in a five-minute drive, I know, you know, we've had some car trouble. And in particular, we don't need a 24-hour business in this location, especially a gas station convenience store. What's been missing in everything that you guys have heard tonight, whether from the developers, the owner, or your city staff, who, again, Julie, you've been amazing, as has Beth, is what do we need as residents? We need common sense that upholds the purpose of the neighborhood commercial zoning district, and if you read the definition provided by Beth, I'm going to sum it down to two points. Serve the residents of the immediate neighborhood area, and minimize adverse impact on adjoining residential uses. What does that mean? To me, again, I'm not an expert, but it means we need a clean and healthy, a clean and environmentally healthy area in which to live and raise our families, we need a safe community, not compromised, there has been no talk tonight about what a 24-hour business brings off a major highway, but we don't need a 24-hour business that is, that is there to serve profitability and to bring in non-resident commuters, commuters in our neighborhood at all hours of the day, seven days a week. We need infrastructure and solutions that alleviate, not amplify, existing traffic congestion on Hennepin Town Road and Pioneer Trail, and the developer's answer is that, hey, it's just going to increase, does not reflect the concerns our community has about the direct impact this development will have, not just on overall traffic, but what's been discussed on breezy way. And I'm sorry to go financial, but we all make investments with our money, right? We need to protect tens of millions of dollars that we have collectively, there's a very packed room tonight, we've invested it in the purchase of our properties prior to this development, the enhancements of those properties, and yeah, the city taxes we've paid. So when I personally, as an uneducated, first-timer presenting to you, I look at this proposal, and I see many things. I see a location chosen because it looks maybe doable on a planning map as the last space in a tic-tac-toe board. I see an owner who may care about his customers in other cities, but despite everything he's led you and us to believe, he's not a neighbor here, and he will put his profits above our well-being. I see a proposal that needs waiver after waiver after waiver. I see a proposal that needs waiver after waiver after waiver, just to be able to shoehorn a business onto a property that's not the right size, it's not the right shape, and it's not the right zone for their grand ambitions. And I see a planning office, with all due respect, who appears to be more interested in can this happen than whether it should. Allowing this proposal to progress any further after tonight sets a dangerous and unjust precedent for thousands of EP residents who do not want this type of development. No other gas stations have been approved in EP for more than a decade, especially one nested in this type of residential community. And you can see how much we care. I believe this proposal goes against the city's own neighborhood commercial zone district, its climate plan, and most importantly, its overall commitment to support and protect the well-being of its residents. And not just those in the room tonight, there's many online and many that couldn't be here tonight. Whatever your interpretation of that zoning, I guarantee you, the immediate residents who will be negatively impacted by this proposal are not the target customers for this development, nor will we ever be. Thank you for your time.
And my name is Beth Butel. I live with my husband, Tim, at 9890 Lee Drive in Eden Prairie. Hello, commissioners, city staff, people listening online, and fellow neighbors. Tim and I have lived on Lee Drive for over 30 years, and we lived in the same house. We've raised our children there. We have hosted gatherings. We've worked. We've volunteered in Eden Prairie. We love this community. So I come to you tonight with a very strong history of being in Eden Prairie and a perspective on this area of Eden Prairie. It was only three weeks ago that I learned about this proposal from a friend. I never received any notice about the meetings that were held previously, which is unfortunate. So of course, when we learned about the gas station, the 10 bays of car repair, the convenience store, the car wash, we were stunned and we were disappointed. Because we've been through this before. In the 90s and 2000s, the early 2000s, a gas station was proposed. And at one time, it did get to city council, and they had the wherewithal to decline the project. And after that was over, we thought that was over. There was a lot of talk about soft retail, like a bank, a coffee shop, or a restaurant, which would be very favorable for our neighborhood. And I should say that our neighborhood is on the south side of Pioneer Trail, will directly face this Holiday Station and auto complex and convenience store. So here we are again tonight advocating for our neighbors and our neighborhood to please do not approve this project, especially given the waivers. The developer of this project minimizes the traffic issues that they bring to the area. The traffic's going to increase the walkability, the pedestrian safety. I don't think my neighbors who live in the Prairie, senior living that big multi-unit building, I'm not sure that they've been aware of this. And I've observed these seniors walking from the senior center over to the Walgreens or extending their walk, and they walk along our cul-de-sac too. So I have concerns for those neighbors in the senior building, as well as our neighborhood. You already, Jay, did a great job talking about the number of waivers. Again, we oppose approval of any of those waivers. It's just the fact they need so many waivers says again that this is just too big for this parcel of land. It would be irresponsible to approve this project. That said, we really look forward to the development of this parcel of land. Again, I mentioned, you know, a restaurant, or a bank, or a coffee shop. But the other day, up in the Star Tribune, I read about these food halls where they have vendors coming in. It's an ever-changing marketplace. I've noticed smaller residential and retail mix, which would be perfect, a rental unit with some soft retail in the area, a bike repair shop, again, coffee shop. Thinking creatively about what the possibility is for this parcel of land that would preserve our neighborhood. The Holiday Station doesn't serve our neighborhood. It serves the cars going up and down 169 who are gonna exit Pioneer Trail, get their gas, gas up, and leave. This auto plaza is gonna transform our neighborhood into a pit stop. Thank you.
As I said earlier, my name is Alicia Reeves. I am a resident at Bluff Country Village. I also serve on the board for our association, for the condominium board, as well as the master association board. And I want to thank you all for listening to what is important to our community and why we oppose this project. I've been a homeowner for 18 years, and in addition to the other concerns that were presented earlier, I'm concerned mostly about the preservation of our community. As was said, we're a small association of about 100 units, and what we love about our community is the privacy, the beautiful environment, including the trees, obviously, and the safety that we've enjoyed for many years. Many of us bought homes in that community because of the privacy that it afforded, because of the many beautiful trees, and because we have wildlife, actually, that's visible most days. This project would require the removal of trees and the shelter that they provide from the animals and from the adjacent parking lot and the businesses there. I'm really concerned about the safety of our neighborhood, and then learning that we have an F rating for that egress on the Hennepin Town Road, that's concerning. We have many young families and their children. They play on our private streets because we don't have an open area for them to play. This gas station would increase traffic, some of which will be diverted through our private streets and through our neighborhood. I know they mentioned the bus stops earlier, but there are two. One at the end of Belmont Lane, so right at Belmont Lane and Hennepin Town Road. The other one is at Breezy Way and Hennepin Town Road. So we have two bus stops twice a day, and the road is already heavily trafficked. There's also a daycare slash preschool that's directly across the street from our community. This project will impact our sense of safety and well-being that exists there today. And I'd also like to say, as Beth mentioned, we're not opposed to progress or small business, but a business of this size and magnitude would be detrimental to our community, especially given our proximity to it. And again, I want to thank you for listening to our concerns and considering the reasons that we are opposed to the project. And then I do have one question. So when you say F rating, is it like A, B, C, D, E, F? Okay. Thank you.
All right, I think the next was Tausha or Hausha, maybe? 9838 Belmont Lane? Said maybe? No? Okay. Patricia Maher? You didn't check yes or no? Would you like to speak?
Good evening. If you can state your name since I-
My name is Patricia Ryan Maher.
Good evening.
And I live on 9778 Belmont. Purchased the house 12 years ago. It was to be our retirement home. We planned to live there until we could no longer live there. We're not sure that this development will allow us to do that. I'm going to approach the problem of the roads. The roads leading into Bluff Country Village is a U-shaped entrance that goes free, it goes Belmont Lane, it goes up like this, and Breezy Way is on the way out. Up until this point, we thought we owned those roads. We maintained them for 20 years. Now, what will occur is with the lane, with, what will occur? When you have to, you can't turn out of the driveways in either, onto Hennepin Town Road. What will happen is the traffic will come up, they will come up Belmont Lane, which is our private road, they will go up like this around our development and then enter into the new entrance that goes down into the car bay. It would be an easy right turn for gasoline trucks to come up Belmont Lane, up around, and make a lovely right-hand turn down into the development. We are really concerned about what this will do, not only to our neighborhood, our families, the kids playing, but we have to now maintain those roads for a development we don't want. Please, don't allow this to happen to us. Thank you.
Gary Klusk, would you like to speak?
That's me. Everything's recovered that I wanted to say. I think it's great.
Okay.
Can I take this spot?
All right. Well, let me just go, let me just go through the list, and then I'll let everyone else go. Thank you. Just kidding, that was everyone that said yes. So would you like to come up? A lot of no's. Would you like to come up, sir?
Good evening. If you could state your name.
I live in California in the winter, and I live 90, my name's Bruce Barrett. I live 9781 Belmont Lane. I've lived there, lived there for a number of years. So I'd like to bring some expertise about roads here. I have 30 years' experience, City Minneapolis Paving Department, paving department, as a 20 as a supervisor. Now, if the commission would like, I can get my bona fide city engineer for you. Now, 30 years doing concrete work for the City of Minneapolis. We repaved, I started in 1970 to 2001. We had a 30-year program to repave every city street, residential street, which we did, completed. So I worked on every city residential street in Minneapolis over 30 years on the concrete crews, 20 years supervising. Never in 30 years has any of my crews ever put a driveway onto a residential zoned street from a commercial property, ever, unless it was grandfathered in pre-World War II. You know, Minneapolis has a lot of stuff from 1910. But in new construction, it's absolutely not allowed by the traffic engineering department to have a commercial business exit onto a residential street that's zoned residential, if it hasn't been grandfathered in many years previous. And I'll tell you about Breezy Lane, which I live right there in Belmont. Now, that's, road is a residential road. It's constructed like that. It's class V, 5 inches deep, 2 inches of wearing course. Hennepin Town Road's a commercial road. It's probably 8 inches thick asphalt. What will happen, if they exit onto Breezy Way, that road will be trash in one year. It's not designed to have constant traffic. And we know there's gonna be heavy traffic, truck traffic. That road will be destroyed in short order. And I'll tell you why Holiday wants to build a station there. Holiday's not owned by the Erickson family, and he died anymore. Holiday's owned by Circle K. Circle K owns thousands and thousands of gas stations and half the 7-Elevens in the U.S. They want to split the two speedways. We got a Speedway on Pioneer Trail and Flying Cloud, and we got one right down Anderson Lakes exit there on the Bloomington side. So greedy Circle K, you know, Holiday's one of their, just their little side jobs, wants to, you know, take business away from their main competitor, which is Speedway. That's why they want this spot. And we certainly don't need it in the neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
All right, I just want to do a last call. I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to be heard, so if you'd like to come up and then.
This is Amina Mirza. Can you hear me now? This is Amina Mirza, and I live in 9704 Belmont Lane. I'm a mother of two-year-old, the beautiful girl with me. We have young children playing on our roads, and with the traffic diversion on the Breezy Way, obviously, the traffic is also going to come onto the Belmont Lane. And we have concerns that, you know, not only that my daughter, but others, due to lack of infrastructure, or I would say, the not-lendier roads, our children play on the roads with our supervision, which won't be any longer safer. And there is no vehicle limit that's pertaining to the orders that we have just seen, and our roads may be damaged at this point. And currently, the Belmont residents and the Breezy residents are paying around $3.50 to $3.60 right now, which is pretty huge for the HOA. And as residents, we would be paying higher for the damage of the roads that would be used by the extra traffic at this time. And just a reminder that there are no sideways for the children to play around, and we have children who are lesser than five-year-old in our neighborhood with a lung disease. So how is that pollution going to help them, or is it make, will it make it any worse? These are just few of the concerns that I had, which I wanted to address. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioner. Thank you, commissioners and staff. I'm Jerry Martin, and I did check yes when I signed in, and I did send an email, but I thought of something after I sent the email to Julie the other day. I recognize what a tough job you have to do, and I also have lived in Eden Prairie since 1998. I live at 9853 Lee Drive. I think the city is very well-planned, very well-zoned. And you and your predecessors have done a great job overseeing the planned development of our community, so thank you for your job. And I wanted to say, in addition to what I had said in my email about all the waivers or variances requested for the development, the one thing that really concerns me is that just the intensity of the development. And I think when you look at what you have approved historically in Eden Prairie as far as gas stations, even other holiday stations right here in our city, as well as any of the outfits that actually serve cars. Firestone has 10 bays. Costco has bays. The Grease Monkey on the corner of Flying Cloud and Anderson Parkway doesn't even have 10 bays, but it's on that super-busy intersection. None of them, to my knowledge, actually abut and are adjacent to residential. So that is my concern, is not developing that site as community retail, but developing- So that's truly my concern, is having 10 bays that generate extra pollution for automobile repair and a 24-hour gas station with the traffic impact on the road that many people have already addressed. So thank you. Appreciate you listening, and thanks for holding a public hearing.
Hi. I'm Margaret Reed, and I live about a mile away, 11404 Creek Ridge Drive. My family has been attending Kinderberry Hill Child Development Center for eight years, been Eden Prairie residents for 10. My children have all attended. I have four children. My youngest is about to start going there. They play outside three, four, five times a day, depending on the weather. The increased emissions, the increased traffic in the parking lot alone, with all the best intentions, children do get away and dart off. If we have increased traffic on that Hennepin Town Road, I'm very concerned for their safety. Additionally, in the summertime, kindergarten through third graders attend that school. They take day trips across Hennepin Town Road into the little park in the community. I'm not sure the name of it, but I know people out here know the name of that park. Yes, yes, they take trips there. I am almost certain those trips will be canceled if this gas station goes into place. As a working mother, I value that daycare center, everything it offers my children, my and my husband, the ability to continue the jobs that we love to do, and our children, a safe place, a fun place that they like to go, and a place where they get to get out of the grounds when they're that bit older. So please, please rethink the size and scope of this development. Again, I echo the other thoughts. I'm not against something going in here, but this is a community. This is a real community. This is a school. So please rethink it. Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry. My name is Jeff Lofrenier.
And I'm Paula Lofrenier.
We both live at 9682 Belmont Lane. And I, first of all, agree very much with much of what you've already heard tonight, but I would like to emphasize an additional point, and that is the safety of movement from the intersections at Breezy Way and Belmont Lane onto Hennepin Town Road. Those are two difficult left turns, and this plan is forcing travelers who are exiting the gas station to make a left from Breezy on Hennepin Town Road. We've already had a discussion, a question from Commissioner Gooding about the sign line. It is a difficult sign line. We know people use Hennepin Town Road to avoid traffic on 169. There are speeders on that road who have very difficult time slowing down approaching that tight intersection, which makes a left turn out from Breezy Way or Belmont Lane a very dangerous undertaking. I have had a couple of near misses in the slightly more than one year that I've lived there because of people speeding down that road. If we are intentionally putting a business situation in place that's going to force more people to make that left turn from Breezy Way, and definitely will happen from Belmont Lane as well, then we are increasing the risk of traffic accidents at those intersections. The fact that we have heard that there isn't an adequate and full plan to deal with this yet, but you're being asked to approve this, but those sorts of decisions to be made later is extremely problematic. And I think that I would strongly, strongly request that you consider the safety implications of the plan as it is written before approving it. Thank you.
And I would like to add my voice as far as the width of the streets that are in our development. We do not have sidewalks. I'm a walker. I walk almost every day. And there are no sidewalks. And by the time you add garbage trucks and moving vans, and then the kids that are on their bikes going back and forth, you've got a lot of people on those streets. And I really think that you need to consider, go out there and look for yourselves. Come to our neighborhood. I'd love to show you around. But I really think that you need to take a look at that before you start adding traffic to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioners, staff, and neighbors. My name's Paul Gaird. I live at 9796 Belmont Lane. So if you're coming up Breezy Way, right to the end of Breezy Way, which is actually only like two and a half blocks, we live right at the end of that. So we'll be within like a block and a half of the gas station area and the service bays. Anyway, a couple of different concerns. One is they talked about easements onto the roads, Bridge Hill Terrace and also Breezy Way. And those, the original plans were like 1999 when this was done, the easement was there. But there's never been any access roads to those from that commercial, neighborhood commercial lot. Okay? It's been in the plan. There's a small easement area along that border. But if you, those road, both those roads have been exclusively used and maintained for 21 years, 21 years by the residents in that Bluff Country Village community. None of the maintenance has been bored or paid by the commercial properties at all. So we've exclusively used it and maintained it. And there's some talk about maybe that there might be needed some arrangement to share costs. Well, they've never shared costs for 21 years. And so there's one issue right there. The other thing is, at the, at the west side, which is right behind, it's hard to see unless you actually look at a map, but you've got the gas station, and then you've got that long strip of bays for the repair center. Right behind the bays and the machine or the car repair, on the west side of the lot, okay, there's a big, if you actually go, I think you might have driven by the neighborhood, but if you actually go, there's a big hill that goes up, just about 15 feet off the main big parking lot there, okay? And it's a big hill, and then there's a bunch of trees and shrubs. Okay, over on the Pioneer Trail side, you've got the two heritage trees, but there's a big row of trees and bushes and shrubs on that big hill going up. That's basically the support. I mean, we used to have a place on a bluff and by a lake, and the DNR exclusively refused to let us remove that, because that's what's holding the hill up. Okay? Now you've got a road on that backside, Bridge Hill Terrace, right behind those trees and bushes on that hill. They're talking about carving out the hill, taking down the bushes, taking down the trees. So all that stuff that was meant by nature to support that road, where you've got moving trucks, you've got delivery trucks, you've got people up there right in front of their homes, all those trees and bushes are going to be clear-cut out. Okay, they're saving it one tree on the Pioneer Trail side, but all those other trees are going to be totally removed. Hill will be removed. Nothing really supporting it, other than a retaining wall. And it's a 15-foot hill, so they mentioned something about a 10-foot wall, but that's even below the height difference there. So you've got a 10-foot, even if you say it's 10-foot high, you've got a retaining wall that's closer. They want to move it closer because they want to have a waiver to make that like a few feet or something like that from the road, actually. And I looked at DNR, I mean, the MINDAP calls for a setback that's at least the height of the retaining wall, it has to be that distance away from any road, public road. And I don't know why our road would be any different. We've got moving trucks, there had to be a moving truck sitting up there. We've got a rainstorm, saturated ground, and you're only got two and a half feet to just a retaining wall that's not mechanically designed to support that. So that's a big concern that we in the neighborhood have, that, you know, what's the structure, structural integrity for years to come of that retaining wall? And so we've got several concerns that way. But anyway, that's what I wanted to add on top of all the good things everybody else has said. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Mario Cuccarella. I'm the owner of the property. I'm the owner of Maplewood Development and Construction, 1128 Harmon Place, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Maplewood Development, over 40 years, has developed and put on the ground over 10,000 commercial and residential lots. So I think we've got a lot of experience in this particular category. I'd like to give you a little history and then just accentuate a few points. Sometimes things get said and they become gospel, and I just want to make sure there's some accurate history about this. First of all, many years ago, we purchased this property out of, there was some bankruptcy issues and tried to halt the tax forfeiture process. So we spent a considerable amount of money to pay all the taxes and bring this current. Frankly, we consulted with the staff, and the gas station use was part of the original uses contemplated and approved for this particular site. This is not a surprise for anyone here, and the neighborhood has known this. And frankly, it's distingueuous to argue that this is not an approved or understood fact that had permeated their purchases prior to the time that they, their residential project was completed at Bluff Country Village. Specifically, this is proven out by the fact that the Walgreens store is an example, has several non-compete's for certain purchases if the convenience store were to be built. And this was known and discussed at the staff level many, many years ago. Secondly, the PUD approved for all of the uses in the Bluff Country Village addition anticipated waivers and variances for the city zoning. That is why there was a PUD approved for the site initially at the time of the original plat. And frankly, all of the other users who are now living and enjoy this particular development received not exactly the same waivers, but similar waivers and variances in order to get those properties built because of the tough configuration of the site. That was the purpose of the PUD right from the beginning. Thirdly, I just want to point out that this is a very good user. We have a responsible and well-heeled business here. This is an owner who the city can go to if there is an issue. I know that there's been a lot of talk about individual-owned restaurants or coffee shops and so forth, but unfortunately, that's a little bit delusional. It just doesn't exist right now. And frankly, I think there is a misnomer and the truism about the fact that we've been dealing with this for 20 years, and you're still looking at this site in its present condition is, really tells the story. Frankly, look at the site today. It's a disgrace. It's an old rundown strip center with not one credit tenant in here. Now, you've had your say. Let me just have mine so you understand this. I'm an older man. I've been in this business a long time. I've heard all these arguments before. I just want to tell you this because it helps, I think, to hear it from the developer's perspective. Because you were the first one there does not mean you dictate what comes in after you. There is zoning. That's why there's a planning commission. This is your job to look at this and look for the future. All of us in this room are going to be gone someday. So the planning is for that future, to pick the best uses and to do the right thing. Please remember that there was always something there before you got there. There was always something there. There were trees removed before your houses were built. There were trees there. There was infrastructure, there's all that that had to change, including all the accesses. It's not popular to say this, and I know nobody wants to hear it, but that's the truth of this site. And I want to, I just want to end by saying that, and reiterate, these are, these are tough decisions. Nobody likes change. But that's what we're here to do, is to pick the right thing. And the fact that this is the third gas station, convenience store, that's been proposed for this site over the many years, I think is telling. Thank you. Thanks.
Do you have something nude off, or I don't want to have a debate?
I don't. I was just going to say, the neighborhood commercial zoning district, in the definition provided by the city plans, the ultimate goal is twofold, and let's not forget that. Serve the residents of the immediate neighborhood area, period. Minimize adverse impact on adjoining residential uses. I don't believe that either one of those things are inherent in the proposal. And I'm sorry that this gentleman has spent 20 years, you know, going through this, but the city, your commission and the council should hear our views, as well as someone who invested in property many, many years ago, and it hasn't gone his way.
Good evening.
That's fine.
My name is Jim Silleri. I live at 9676 Belmont. And I've spent most of my career working in service-related industries, and I always worked with the idea that the customer may not be always right, always be right, but the customer has to be listened to. And we're the customer. And first of all, I appreciate all of you listening to us and our concerns. But I would have to say that through this process, I have been astounded at the arrogance of the people that are developing it. They have not reached out to the communities. It took prodding upon prodding upon prodding for them to even send us a notice of meetings, or a notice of this meeting. In fact, this meeting was pushed back because they didn't provide a notice. I went to the meeting down at their lot. They were not interested in my questions. They were interested in telling me what they wanted to do. And it was done as a foregone conclusion. They, I'm also on the board of the Bluff Country Village. They've not reached out to our board about the streets or the development that needs to be done. To them, it's a foregone conclusion. It's just the money, and they're not interested in what we have to say. They're not interested in what we feel. They're not interested in what we need. If they would have come out at the start and said, here's what we're trying to do. What are your concerns? How do we work with the community to make this viable? That might have been different. But they weren't interested in that. They just want to put in that property. And I don't think that's the right way to do it. I think that whenever you're doing something that impacts a community, and you've heard all the reasons why it's impacting our community, you need community involvement. You need to hear our voices, and they need to be taken seriously. None of that has gotten into the presentation, the proposal that you have in front of you. Not until today have you really had the opportunity to hear our concerns. And I think that's wrong. And I just wanted to make that point, that as much as people say, well, we've talked to the community, we had people come to the meetings, they really didn't listen to us. Nobody listened to us. So I appreciate your listening to us, and I hope you take what you're hearing today with, to heart, because we're very concerned about what this is going to do to our community. So I thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing anyone else. I think we've gone through everybody. Would someone like to move to close the public hearing? Have further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
All right. I have a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public hearing's closed. Further discussion items?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kirk.
I'd just like to, I don't know how many of you have followed what's been going on at the planning commission the last few months. There's been some pretty interesting stuff. And our mayor, Ron Case, wrote a letter that's on the webpage that I think is a very good description of what the responsibility of the city is relative to development. And I'm going to take a second to read a couple of parts of that. I would very much encourage you to get on there and look at it, because it, it does take a balanced view on what, who is the customer of the city? Because certainly the residents are, but also the developers are. So there has to be a balance there. And, and Ron says, "A municipal government plays an important role in the growth of cities by guiding and zoning the types of development within specific areas, ensuring residential proximity to business, recreation, religious amenities, and building the infrastructure for present and future growth." But in reality, cities usually find themselves in a position of simply managing the growth and developing, and development of the private properties within the federal, state, county, and watershed rules and regulations. Private landowners have a constitutional guarantee to I would very much encourage you to get on there and look at it, because it does take a balanced view on what -- who is the customer of the city, because certainly the residents are, but also the developers are. So there has to be a balance there. And Ron says, "A municipal government plays an important role in the growth of cities by guiding and zoning the types of development within specific areas, ensuring residential proximity to business, recreation, religious amenities, and building the infrastructure for present and future growth." But in reality, cities usually find themselves in a position of simply managing the growth and developing -- and development of the private properties within the federal state, county, and watershed rules and regulations. Private landowners have a constitutional guarantee to fully maximize the potential development of their properties. Nonetheless, there are constraints and conditions which govern what landowners can and cannot do with their properties. If municipal government wishes to totally control the development and/or keep land open space, it must purchase the land at market rate. And I think that's an important thing to understand. People, many times when they come in front of the planning commission, say, "You guys want a gas station there." We don't want a gas station there. A developer proposed a gas station there, and we're simply trying to judge, how does that fit into the codes and ordinances and the zoning of the city, and is that an appropriate use in the opinion of this advisory council here? And just one last comment. Everybody on this council's a volunteer, and we all do this because we're interested in the community. And if you really want to take an interest in this community, volunteer for a council. There are a bunch of them. Planning commission isn't the only one, and I would encourage you to get more and more involved in your community in the longer term, so you really understand the long-term perspective. Sorry to take that time, but I thought that kind of frames where I think the commission's coming from on making these recommendations.
Commissioner Sanktis.
I would like to, as a corollary to my question earlier tonight about an hour ago to one of the gentlemen over here regarding, what was your process for informing the community about this pending project? And to be honest with you, I wasn't satisfied with your answer. And what I'm hearing loudly and clearly is people are not being listened to. It is so powerful to listen. It is so powerful to be humble. It is so powerful to understand the dynamics at play in a community. Eden Prairie is a very, very complex macrocosm of many neighborhoods. This is one neighborhood perceiving a major impact. And I believe that there needs to be more dialogue, constructive dialogue, between any proposed commercial development within the parameters of zoning and waivers with the community. These are the people who, at the end of the day, will be experiencing this process while the people developing it exit elsewhere. And so that is one of my contentions in respect to constructing a dialogue. It's very easy to think about the mechanics, the engineering, the traffic, but it's an entire -- it becomes a process, a negative energy, and it needs to be addressed. It's an 800-pound gorilla in the room, and it has to be tamed.
Commissioner Mehdi?
This one's a tough one. I think it, again, kind of brings to question our position on the planning commission, our role on the planning commission as to what it is we're trying to advise the city council to do. And sometimes it's more technical and land use-oriented as opposed to, you know, whether or not it's what people want to see there. But if it's there by right, it's -- that's one thing. So this one's interesting, because by right, a gas station and a repair shop's allowed. However, and I think this point regarding the definition of what neighborhood commercial means, which is that it minimizes the impact on adjoining residential uses, and I do think that is the intent of the idea behind the zoning of neighborhood commercial, this one would certainly not qualify. I think it does impact the adjoining residential uses in a negative way. So the code in itself is a little bit conflicting in that the gas station's allowed, but it really doesn't meet the definition of a neighborhood commercial use in this case. Again, I'm kind of making comments on both sides here, but I think another thing we need to realize and accept is another use or another -- if this is not approved, you know, there's going to be something here. It's going to be developed. It sounds like the neighborhood is in favor of something like restaurant, you know, retail, that kind of stuff, which I do think would be a great use here. But something like, and I'll take restaurant as a specific example, is very heavy traffic, especially in the PM hours. I don't think we're going to get away from the traffic issue, no matter what's here. So I don't -- in a sense, yes, this is a huge traffic concern, but I think everything's going to be a traffic concern. And, you know, the property has the legal right to access on Breezy Way, and obviously they would need to contribute to increase in maintenance costs, which the association currently has, you know, a very easy argument to say, "Here's our bills for the last 20 years." You know, if it -- whatever, you know, if it's all of a sudden twice as high, well, that's your fair share of what is now incurred. So that's a private matter, but certainly important. I don't think there's a great solution to traffic. I don't see one. Without the access on Breezy Way, there's problems. With the access on Breezy Way, there's problems. So I don't have a solution for that. I'm just kind of making some comments here on both sides. The -- I do have a concern with the proximity of the auto shop to the townhome buildings. That is very close. I don't think that condition exists anywhere else, so that's one concern of mine. It wasn't brought up, but I also think that the car wash can be a concern. If you ask anyone who lives in Martin Blue, if you know that project, I believe the car wash there does cause noise issues. But putting all that aside, we're sort of, I think, at this balance between, as a commission, what do people think? Yes, the traffic's an issue, but I think the next development to come down the line is also going to be an issue, so that's not really solving anything. But ultimately, do we feel that this use is appropriate for the site and kind of the impact that it does create, given the intended zoning of it? So that's all my comments. I don't know if, kind of, where I sit. I'm interested in what others think about that.
Thanks, Commissioner Mehdi. Commissioner Taylor?
No, we heard a lot about traffic studies and traffic modeling, and from hearing from the residents as well, there was a lot of discussion about pedestrian safety. And I haven't heard anything in reference to, has there been any studies done on pedestrian safety in this area, which we know there's going to be X percentage of increase in traffic. So it'd be interesting to hear more about whether, what type of pedestrian safety has also been modeled for this area if we were to develop it.
I'm not going to repeat a bunch about what Commissioner Mehdi said, but the traffic issue in this case is a little unique, because the landowner or the potential developer here has rights to tie into Breezy Lane. In most areas of city, if you dump into a residential building, you know, area, you're dumping into city streets, maintained by the city and everything else. This also opens up Belmont Lane, which is a private road. You know, so when they come out and turn right on Breezy Road, people find the easy way out. They turn left, they go up through Belmont Road, and that is totally private road. There's no, you know, no way to really stop that. So when you look at it, it's opening up a private road to a simple way out of a neighborhood that is really an unintended consequence of this. And I struggle with that. You know, you've got the overall traffic issue, but now people are going to be traveling over a street that's owned by a community, that's maintained by them, that that developer has absolutely no right to. And I don't know how you get past that. You know, do you, you know, does the developer convert the main street to a city street, maybe? And then put up some mechanism to stop people from doing that? How do you do that? You know, I can't get past the Belmont Lane part of this. It is a simple way out to Henupentown Road, and they have no right to go on it.
Commissioner Higgins?
I've listened to a lot of this, and having noted the comments from Commissioner Mehdi about a project that was just -- and the letter from the mayor that we were just involved in with a lot of controversy over what the impact of a development was going to be, and came to a different outcome, I think. But we don't know yet, actually, where that's going to land, because there is still one more step that is going to play itself out. Anyway, to get away from that, my point is that I think, having seen this area for about 20 years and realizing the impact that the highway and that the access that Pioneer Trail has, we need to be mindful of what we've already put in place before we ever got here today, namely that we've got that senior residence that we -- this commission, some of you weren't on it at the time, but we were involved in that development. There are a lot of folks that are now going to be finding their way into and around activities in the neighborhood as well. And this whole mention of pedestrian safety, I don't think we've really contemplated as much as we might have thought to do if we've been a little more careful about it. But on the other hand, I don't think we would've stopped that senior development either. But I have heard of some other housing that is being possibly prepared for presentation to the city at some soon point in this same area. And so my concern is not to make it any worse for the folks that want to have residential quality of life in that area. But it is true that this particular project site does need development, and so, one way or another, we are going to need to kind of be mindful of that, I think, as we make our decision this evening, because something is going to need to happen there in order for it to continue and to be healthy for its own purpose.
Commissioner Kirk?
Sure. One thing that's a reality in Eden Prairie is everything that's easy to develop is already developed. So we don't have any easy-to-develop things anymore. So we're doing the nasty ones, and this is a nasty one. I actually don't have a huge problem with the use. It's not perfect in my mind, but it fits the zoning definition, and I think it could be made to work with the possible -- with the distinct exception right now of the traffic issue. Two issues between Commissioner Mehdi and Commissioner Gooding. They did a nice job of talking about what some of those traffic issues are, but we also have an intersection there that is just overloaded. And, you know, the reality is, as Commissioner Mehdi or somebody else said, that something's going to go on that land, and it's going to cause more traffic. So that is going to be a problem. But the issue of Breezy Way and Belmont Lane is a sticker for me. I'm not sure I can get over that one right now.
Commissioner Sanktis? Commissioner Sanktis and Commissioner Mehdi?
There are a number of threads here in this discussion. Let's start with the fact that in years gone by, people gathered at post offices. That's where you greet your neighbors. Later on, coffee shops, Starbucks, Caribou, and whatnot became gathering places for people. And communities need gathering places. A gas station off a freeway creates anonymous traffic. It creates movement, migration of people who have no vested interests in that area. And so the community feels vulnerable. There's fear. There's not only fear, because one of the other threads is environmental disturbance. I don't have to rehash for you the current controversies around the Enbridge Line, et cetera, et cetera. But I believe we've reached a watershed moment in this country and in this world, and I'm deeply concerned about it. And we talk about the future. The future is not internal combustion engines. The future is electric, solar, and hydrogen. And I do not see one iota of any investment in a process other than some vague reference to creating an EV charging station here. We need to move ahead with more green technology in green commercial districts, and this is what unsettles me about this proposal. Yeah, on paper, it may seem kosher, within the parameters of the waivers and the PUD and the zoning, but I have deep concerns about we need to draw a line in the sand somewhere.
I just, to follow up on what Commissioner Gooding was talking about with Breezy Way and the connection to Belmont, I have a question for staff or potentially developer, if staff doesn't know, because I, again, regardless of the project that goes here, that's an issue that, I mean, at least could help to be mitigated by, you know, a right turn-out-only and restrict access, you know, from people living around. But do you know, staff, whether it is confirmed that the access agreement in place is only with regards to that portion of Breezy Way, or does the developer have an access agreement in place that actually pertains to the entire development?
Mr. Commissioner, or Chairman and Commissioner Mehdi, the agreement that we saw, easement agreement was for this property, and it allowed easement rights over Bridge Hill Terrace and Breezy Way only, not on Belmont.
Okay. Thank you. That was just a question. That was all I had.
Okay. Chair? Yeah. Commissioner Far?
Yep. I have a few thoughts, and I think excellent comments already from my fellow commissioners. I don't want to repeat a lot of them, but some of them really resonate with me. You know, this developer's not causing the existing traffic problems out there, and we do have a traffic problem. Level of Service F now, and I didn't hear a strong mitigation plan as part of this proposal. It will be a remedy, and it might work later, but I was really hoping to find something as part of this proposal, and it's not there. The topic of a gas station, I'm just going to try and divide that up into a couple different topics here. It's a permitted use within our zoning ordinance. It can fit in a neighborhood commercial zone very well. I think this type of gas station, 16 pumps, is not neighborhood-oriented. That's not the target market. The target market is a regional reach, and I think that's the rub. From strictly in the black-and-white zoning ordinance that we read and enforce, a gas station is allowed. That's fine. We've got a gas station. It's marketed poorly in terms of this particular property with this particular zone, and that's where I have a little bit of an issue. I think the convenience store will be a wonderful asset to your neighborhood. If it has competition with the Walgreens, fine. I think competition is good. If there's a gas station one mile away, one block away, five miles away, 10 miles away, God bless America, competition is good. If they think there's people who want to buy gas, that's fine. We're all going to turn to electric vehicles in the future. We can see that wave coming, and it is what it is. They feel they can make money off selling gas yet. It's an approved use within our zoning ordinance. The -- a couple of points just about the neighborhood commercial zone definition that's been brought up, and I agree with a lot of what's been said. We read this. We enforce this ourselves. I do not believe a 24/7 operation is consistent with what the neighborhood needs, wants, or could have. And again, the number of pumps for the gas station specifically, I think, is exacerbating the issue of the request for a gas station in a neighborhood zone. That said, I have no problem with gas station or the convenience store, for that matter. The repair lot, the repair shop, I should say, again, is an approved use, and I think with doors down, that's fine. Commissioner Mehdi brought up a good point, and I was going to mention it myself, that I think the missed topic was the car wash. When the door opens and you leave and you get the dryer blowers, if that's a 24/7 operation, that's going to be your first call to the city, I guarantee it. Those blowers are really noisy, and so something has to be worked out that, otherwise, we're just going to get a lot of noise complaints. Public safety is our concern up here as commissioners, as well as everybody's. We want to keep our children safe, neighbors walking, biking, et cetera. There is a sidewalk on the north side of Breezy Way that can be used for that safety. I don't think the sidewalk continues around to Belmont. Maybe it should, but that was part of the neighborhood decision that was made when that development was development was put in. We don't want to have a reactive solution to safety. If, God forbid, a child gets hit or something like that, we want to be proactive and make sure our community members are safe. This is a very vehicular intensive use, obviously. That's why vehicular intensive uses are put in locations like this, so that they don't go too deep into a neighborhood. And so, this is right on the fringe, it's by the freeway. I think it's a good location for this zone, so I don't think the city has improperly zoned this parcel. I think it should be developed with something similar to this. I think the intensity exacerbates the issue that is making all of you a little bit sore and uneasy, and frankly, as Commissioner Sanktis put it, fearful. So, I am torn. The last comment I want to make is just about the tree preservation plan. I agree with staff's comment about, you know, it would have to be cash and lue. I'm not a fan of taking down heritage trees, and despite the possible danger to the sanitary sewer on that one tree, number 201 or 202, whatever it was, I've got a little small place in my heart for that tree. And its canopy is up high enough so that it doesn't block the visual awareness of the buildings in that retail zone. So, I'm torn. Again, had it not been for traffic, like Commissioner Kirk said, I think this checks a lot of boxes for us, and we can use engineering principles to mitigate some of the hazards or impacts to the neighborhood. But I haven't seen a traffic solution yet that is a good plan. That's my two cents.
I guess I would, everyone's kind of touching the same thing, same concerns. I'm not overly opposed to the use of a gas station there. What I'm struggling with is the auto care center. I think it's really tight to the neighborhood. And then I went and visited the site today and turned onto Breezy Way, and I was going too fast and saw the 15 mile an hour sign, and just thinking of everyone coming there to drop off their cars, I just, I'm having trouble getting past that as well, like some other people are. I think, like I said, the use is okay, I think, but it can't be encroaching into that road, in my opinion. I think it's creating an issue, so.
I think there definitely needs to be work on a traffic solution before I could support this. If there were an elegant traffic solution, I think I could support it. And we've closed the public hearing, and I don't want to put Mr. Rue more on the spot about this traffic, that's necessary, but on the other corner of the city where I live in the northwest quadrant, the corner of County Road 4 and Highway 5, where the Kowalskis is, and another Walgreens, we've got that stoplight, I'm sorry, I forget the name of the road there, just north of the intersection of 4 and 5, where you can turn left into the Kowalskis, turn right into the...
Wagner Way?
Wagner Way there. And, obviously, a stacking, queuing issue there, north of 5. But that's full interchange with stoplights. That functions, but I'm sure that's at a level of service E or F. And I didn't hear anything about putting a stoplight at this interchange into the Walgreens and this site. And again, I don't want to open up Pandora's Box now and have a discussion about that, but stoplights, you know, calm and prevent accidents and provide opportunities for crosswalks. And so, again, if I was a traffic engineer, I guess I would be one, but I'm not. So, I just noticed that that's a solution in a different part of our city and hasn't been discussed. So, like Commissioner Kirk said in summary, it's just like, things ought to be maybe flushed out a little bit more so that we have a firm plan going forward, so we feel that everybody's going to be safe when this development gets put up. I'm not anti-this development at all. I kind of like the fact that it's finally being developed. They've got a sound business plan, even though some people think that, you know, our gasoline cars are going to be done in a few years.
Any comments? Commissioner Mehdi?
I'll just add, I think, and Commissioner Farr, you summarized it well, is that maybe it's not necessarily the use that we're in total disagreement with, it's the intensity of the use here for this particular location. It seems to go beyond the intent of a neighborhood commercial zone. That's what my conclusion, I think, is.
Commissioner Sanktis?
I think I'll reiterate my position. I'm not enthusiastic about this project as currently proposed, and I believe that we need to orient ourselves toward a greener future and developing commercial properties that are more sustainable and don't promote the automobile culture.
One wrap-up comment. And quite frankly, I'm going to share a little bit of Michael's comments about involving the community. If I was looking to get this project done, I would have come with some obvious solutions to things we talked about today. I can't support it the way it is, but it's not unsupportable in concept. You know, you talked about 16 pumps in a neighborhood thing, and maybe it can't be economically feasible with eight, or 10, or 12. But there are changes that could be made that maybe the community could get behind. One in my mind, the traffic and the ability to restrict the traffic through private roads, so it is not an option. I can't believe that this was brought forward without doing that. It just is mind-boggling to me. So, you know, I have to, there's no way in its total package I could vote for it tonight.
Would anyone else make some comments? Or I think, I don't know, I feel like we're probably edging towards a motion here if someone wants to make one.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion if no one else has a comment. I move to recommend denial of a planned unit development concept review on five acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on five acres, zoning change from OFC Rural... I'm reading the wrong one, sorry. Mike, we're not changing the zoning. I'll start over.
Different project.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend denial for a planned unit development concept review on 3.96 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.96 acres, site plan review on 3.96 acres, and a preliminary plat of two lots on 3.96 acres based on plans stamped dated April 16, 2021, and the staff report dated June 11, 2021.
I have a motion for denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Second for Commissioner Kirk. All those in favor of denying, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And would anyone like to abstain? Right. We're recommending denial to the city council.
Second public hearing this evening, Crosstown Core Industrial Center. We'll take, let's take a three-minute break while people settle in.[1096.15]
I think we go first for your audience. That's okay. I get to clap if I'm on.
It was a nice day out today. The kids had the day off. School? Well, is that random? My kids aren't in daycare. My kids go to kindergarten.
What sort of kind of place would appreciate it?
School like that. I'm sure.
Okay. All right. Okay. It's a red star. I think it's. You have a bowl. Fishing rod. Well, yeah, so. It's expensive. So, yeah. So, yeah. I've always wanted to meet the kids. And then have this year, which is five years, seven. This would be top of the. February. February early in the high light. I can't miss. I know. But I know what it is. And they are. I remember like. I like the money.
I have a train driver who's.
Yeah. So, yeah. Yeah. So, we're just pulled up. So, it would be a person who you want to see. We've got a quick realization of audio dialogue. View that was in the. In the.
We can do that. Okay. Right. We were going to go with. Like my, uh, my, uh, right one. First was the grace. I wasn't even like the hemp. But it's closer to hemp. Green. So. And you let Braden.
Well, you better get a group. Braden is gone. He's pretty bad. Why? He has a wife and kid on New York.
Worked there. Yeah. Yeah. You gotta go. He's. 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 So, yeah. Yeah. He's pulled up. Um, so it would be a person who you want to see. We've got a quick realization of audio dialogue. View that was in the. In the. In the. In the. We can do that. Okay. Right. Okay. We were going to go with.
You like my, uh, my, uh, right one. First was the grace. I just. I wasn't even like the hemp. But it's closer to hemp. Green. So. And you let Braden.
Well, you better get a group. Braden is gone. He's pretty bad. Why? He has a wife and kid on New York. Worked there. Yeah. Yeah. You gotta go. He's. 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 He's.
All right. I'm going to call us back into session, please.
You guys will.
Second public hearing on this evening. Crosstown Core Industrial Center. Request for planned unit development concept review on five acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on five acres. Zoning change from OFC Rural and CH Highway to industrial on five acres. Site plan review on five acres. Preliminary plat to two parcels into one lot on five acres. The proponent, please come forward. Would you state your name for the record and tell us about your project and tell us how you cleared out a room so quick?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chair and planning commission members. That certainly was quite the, uh, agenda item. But we're glad to be in front of you and we do have a PowerPoint presentation, uh, to walk us through our application. Uh, so my name is Eric Miller. I work with Samba Tech. I'm a civil engineer. Our office is at 12800 Whitewater Drive, Minnetonka, Minnesota. And with me is Ben Kurznak with Hempel Real Estate. Ben, if you could state your office address?
Sure. We're up, just up the road from this, um, property, 10050 Crosstown Circle, uh, Suite 600.
Uh, so the project in front of you is, uh, Crosstown Core and, uh, uh, project team. So, developer is Hempel Real Estate. Uh, Ben Kurznak, his contact information there. Uh, again, my name is Eric Miller. I'm with Samba Tech. We're handling the civil and landscape components. And the architect of record is Harris Architects. Uh, the contact there is Casey Cluckstall. Uh, they are out of, out of Illinois. Uh, he is not attending today. Uh, just a little bit of area context. So, the project is located in the, uh, Golden Triangle. Uh, excellent, uh, accessibility from Highway 62, State Highway 62, uh, Highway 169, Highway 212, um, exiting onto, uh, Shady Oak Road, uh, nearby service from the future transit station and on to Crosstown, uh, Crosstown Drive. Uh, currently, uh, the site is a overflow parking lot for one of the adjoining, um, office complexes, uh, and the former Kubaki Restaurant. So, certainly a opportunity here to invest in the property as Hempel Real Estate is proposing to do, create a higher and better use. And as we, uh, learned previously, uh, things do change over time. So, trying to get a use on this property that, that certainly can support, uh, the community being better aligned with the current zoning and comprehensive plan and create an opportunity just for a higher and better use of, of the property. Uh, site plan, uh, the, again, there you can see, I'm sorry, access from Flying Cloud Drive on the corner of Crosstown Circle and Flying Cloud Drive. Um, currently, the building is proposed at 62,000 square feet, uh, 147 surface parking stalls. Uh, it does have, uh, a full truck court on the rear of the building with, uh, nine, uh, depressed truck docks, two drive-in doors. Um, the building will front, Flying Cloud Drive, uh, with the parking there as you see on the south, the east and the west sides of the building. Uh, impervious area around 72%. Impervious area about 20, 27%. Uh, if we do take one step back, um, one item that's, uh, just a bit, uh, interesting with the code, it is a corner lot and, uh, uh, currently, the setback, uh, adjacent to Flying Cloud Drive from the property line to that parking lot is 25 feet. There's a little bit further distance from Crosstown Circle to the service parking lot, uh, but it appears that's primarily due to that is where the current, uh, storm water facility is located. Uh, with the site layout, uh, we are proposing to maintain that parking lot setback along Flying Cloud Drive at 25 feet. And, uh, the parking lot setback along Crosstown Circle is a bit variable as, um, as just due to the site configurations. Uh, therefore, we are requesting a parking lot setback, uh, waiver request from Flying Cloud Drive to maintain that 25-foot, foot setback. Uh, Flying Cloud Drive currently is a, um, bit unusual, but it is a, a rural section roadway. So, there's no curb and gutter, there's a ditch section. Uh, so, uh, that area is also being used to, uh, convey some of the storm water, uh, from Flying Cloud Drive. Um, storm water on this site is currently subsurface, uh, underneath the parking stalls on the eastern leap portion of the site along that, that, along that, uh, uh, eastern, eastern leap parking bay. Uh, just an overview of the site plan, uh, no additional, additional context. I guess, uh, from this point, you can see two primary entrances to the building on the, uh, southwest corner and the southeast corner, uh, pedestrian access out to the sidewalk along Crosstown Circle. There is no, uh, sidewalk facilities at this time along Flying Cloud Drive. Landscape plan, a fairly robust landscape plan. Uh, I've noted, just for reference, the number of two-and-a-half caliper, three-caliper, and even four-caliper trees proposed, uh, and that's to comply with the, uh, caliper inches that the code requires. Uh, it's also important to note that in the I-2 zoning district, the, uh, city code requires the caliper inches to be doubled. Um, basically, a one-story building equaling a two-story building just due to, uh, the site area. Um, that is not a feasible planting density. Um, as you can see, uh, with the growth plan that we're showing on this one, um, we, we, we would not be able to achieve a planting density in compliance with the code. Uh, therefore, we're requesting a landscape waiver from city code due to planting density on the site, really trying to get vi- viability and a healthy landscape, um, plan over time. Uh, part of that offset is, uh, proposing some larger caliper trees, so a three and a four-inch caliper tree. Some of those would probably have to be spaded in, um, uh, and are going to give you a more, uh, maturity, uh, sooner rather than, than a standard two-and-a-half-inch caliper tree. Architecture. So, uh, a bit out of my expertise, but I will, uh, work, do my best to speak to it. So, working to provide a, a, uh, architecture here that meets the city's code with their vertical and horizontal offsets along the building facades on the southern exposure every 40 feet. And you also see that, uh, vertical and horizontal offsets along the, uh, west and the east exposure. Um, the, the front office facade with the windows do wrap around the two corners in the southwest and the southeast corners, uh, for that office space within the facility. Um, the vertical articulation is, is through adjustments in the parapet height and also changes in the, um, materials and the coloring patterns, uh, on, along all, all the elevations. And the, uh, horizontal articulation is through, uh, reveals and the precast panels. Um, again, focusing with distinct massing glass, uh, elements, uh, the awning on the, on the, um, uh, distinct, uh, or the entrances to the, the building. And again, working through articulation and color variation with the exposed aggregate, uh, concrete panels, um, throughout, throughout the, uh, exterior elevations. Uh, here's a, uh, building elevations. Uh, the top would be the south or front elevation. Uh, the second one there is the, uh, eastern elevation. The third is the western elevation. And finally, uh, the fourth is the rear. On the rear, we have removed the, um, horizontal reveals, uh, just to the nature of the elevation with the truck docks. And we've also removed, uh, some of the, um, pattern elements, but we have, have maintained the vertical articulation and, and color pattern. Uh, we certainly appreciate your consideration tonight and, and would stand for any questions that you may have.
Initial questions from the commission. Commissioner Stinkus?
I think I had seen on one of the prior slides that you were thinking about putting in, uh, a number of, uh, evergreen trees. And have you consulted with the city arborist on the specimens to consider?
Uh, we have consulted with the city arborist on the landscaping plan as a whole. I'm not sure if we have talked about the specimens for, uh, evergreens, uh, specifically, um, but to note, we are saving, I believe, eight, seven or eight of the evergreens along Flying Cloud Drive and Crosstown Circle, uh, that are fairly large specimens. So, we, we can, we can confirm and clarify any concerns that the art, city arborist has with, with those species.
And I think it's laudable that you're adding the, the trees. My concern is with climate change, what I'm seeing increasingly with new developments, within six months to a year, the evergreens are turning, the needles turn red, they're dead. And my concern is you would want, uh, vegetation that requires minimal irrigation and can withstand extended periods of arid weather, which we're increasingly getting now. So, I'm wondering, if, that's why I was thinking, just from an aesthetic standpoint and also conservation of water, consideration of species that are drought tolerant. I see here that you're putting a low fescue grass cover in, which is laudable because that doesn't require a lot of maintenance.
We are. It is one of the sustainable features we're noting in the project.
Right.
Low maintenance.
Exactly. So, again, I'm just thinking of, you know, how to conserve water in terms of the species that you might plant.
Thank you. We appreciate that feedback.
Commissioner Taylor?
I, I see that your, your building requires, are you going to be installing five docking bays? Um, taking in consideration, people and workers that's going to be working around those docking bays, what type of engineering controls are you putting in place to ensure the safety, uh, of people? You know, for example, uh, docking locks, protect, protection barriers, interlocking systems to make sure there's no, no, no incident or injuries to people as it relates to working around the docking stations?
Excellent question. Uh, and unfortunately, I'm not the architect of record. Uh, certainly, I know we'd have to comply with building code, um, and there are certain measures that our building code required for these type of facilities. Uh, Ben, I don't know if you are aware of any other measures specifically that you would do since it's a speculative built, building.
End of this time.
Uh, we can certainly look in that.
Okay.
And at a very minimum, obviously, we'd be complying with, uh, the city, state, and federal building codes to protect those safeties are, are in place.
Mm-hmm.
In accordance with such code.
Yeah, that would be very appreciated if you did that.
Initial questions. Mr. Chair? Yeah. Commissioner?
Just out of curiosity. I'll put my microphone on. Mr. Chair, um, out of curiosity, why are the driveway widths, a little bit different off of, uh, Flying Cloud Drive? You have a 30-foot wide driveway when I expected something narrower. And in the back truck area, it's only 25 where I expected something a little bit wider.
Yeah. On the, uh, the, good question. On the, uh, front, we had a fairly wide, uh, driveway entrance, uh, and so really just trying to maintain that, um, that entrance into the site. Uh, some concerns with some of those turning movements, particularly going to the, the west. But a good note on the 25-foot drive, um, we will need to review that. That is probably a little bit undersized. Uh, appreciate that comment.
Sure. Sure. Okay. Make sure the trucks can maneuver that without jumping curbs and things like that.
Absolutely.
Good.
I had a question for you. Oh, no. Uh, how close are you to the nearest light rail stop? Do you know? Can we remember exactly where it's at?
Mr. Commissioner, it's about, um, or Chair, it is about a half-mile.
Okay. And then are you doing anything for that walking mile as far as someone taking the LRT, putting things in place like, I don't know, bike?
There, there are currently no sidewalks along, um, Flying Cloud Drive, so there'd be nothing for us to connect to at this time.
Okay.
Our, our TDNP though does have requirements for certain provisions for, uh, people who may bike to the facility, for instance, and be able to be accommodated in, in accordance with, with the TDNP.
Commissioner, does Stinkus?
Well, actually, my question is to be directed to the city traffic engineer. Maybe we should hold off on that?
Yes, please.
For a moment.
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Julie, you want to take us through a staff report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the request before you this evening is for a PUD concept review, PUD with waivers, zoning change. We've got a handful of different zoning districts that are existing out there today. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone that all to I-2 and site plan review and preliminary plat. So, as I mentioned, the site has currently got three different zoning, uh, designations on it. The property is guided in the 2040 comp plan for industrial flex tech, so a rezoning request to the I-2 zoning district is consistent and compliant with the approved comprehensive plan. As a part of the development proposal that is before you, as the developer mentioned, the building materials and architecture meet and exceed city code requirements. The site plan also provides for parking requirements that meet city code while providing flexibility for multiple, um, development scenarios. The parking provided would meet the code requirements in either scenario of how this building would end up being used since it is being built for spec purposes. There are a couple of setbacks, as they mentioned, that they, or excuse me, a couple of waivers, rather, that they are requesting. One is with regard to setbacks, um, for the front yard parking and the other is for the landscaping requirements. So, as the developer mentioned, a two-story building or a building over a certain height is calculated, um, at doubling the landscaping requirements in the industrial districts. In this particular case, uh, staff is supportive of the landscaping waiver that is being requested because the plan on the site is so robust and in order to meet that requirement by code, it would not be maintainable, um, over the long term. And certainly, we don't want to be, be in that position. The tree replacement requirements are being met, it, through a combination of tree planting on-site and through payment in lieu for the deficit that is unable to be provided on-site for the reasons that I just stated on the last topic. Staff is recommending approval of the development, uh, subject to the conditions listed in your staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner Stinkus?
Well, Julie, I would like to direct this to Mr. Rue. Um, Flying Cloud Drive is a sinuous road without curbing sidewalks, uh, easy bicycle access, pedestrian access. What is the future plan for that portion of flying, Flying Cloud Drive in terms of, uh, basically paving, repaving, and adding those features?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the, uh, Flying Cloud Drive was actually in our CIP to be reconstructed, uh, sometime in the 2020s. Um, but what happened, um, we ended up overlaying the road and delaying that reconstruction and probably until 2030 or later. So, it got, it got put out of our CIP. And I don't recall the reason other than, um, at the time, um, the road, something needed to be done to the road and, and we would have to assess the project, uh, and that usually takes at least a couple of years to get through that process, um, determining costs, who pays for what and how much and go through all that public process. So, as I recall, it, it was in need of some, um, repair. So, we, we overlaid it and then delayed that, uh, reconstruction.
Other questions for the city?
Mr. Chair? Um, oh, not too long ago, maybe it was more than a year at this point, but, uh, United Properties, I think, had come here with a, um, a request, a variance request, um, because they were adding parking in the front of their building on Shady Oak, uh, nearby, uh, very similar condition here. Do you recall what setback we approved for that waiver or for that variance?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I'm recalling the same project that Commissioner Mehdi is referring to, I believe that the setback waiver that was approved was for approximately 30 to 35 feet rather than the 50 feet that is required by code.
Do you, uh, what's your thoughts with regards to the, the 25 feet as it relates to the rest of the street in this area? Do you think that's appropriate for this street?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in reviewing the other properties along Flying Cloud Drive and Crosstown Circle, there are other properties, certainly along Flying Cloud Drive, that provide a approximate 25 to 30-foot setback. Um, and then also, as you move into, uh, Crosstown Circle, I think it's into, not down, um, into Crosstown Circle, that there are other properties as well that, uh, have a reduced setback. I can't venture a guess as to what those are, but they are certainly less than the 50 feet. So, I think a waiver in this particular case would not be out of character with, uh, adjacent or surrounding properties.
Thank you.
Questions proceed.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
Um, the architectural plan indicates a small mechanical room in the corner on, facing Crosstown Circle at the back of the building, and there's a landscape island, um, in the loading dock that, um, could, um, host, uh, access to that mechanical room. Uh, there's no indication that that mechanical room is also an electrical room. It probably will be, or, or they may separate it, but there's a lot of, uh, mechanical, electrical accessories that go on the outside of the building, adjacent to those mechanical, electrical rooms, uh, sprinkler, riser, warning lights, the, the electrical connection cabinets, and, um, the electrical transformer sits out there, uh, maybe a PIV or something like that, uh, for water service. But, um, since the issue wasn't addressed on the plan and the building elevations, there, there's no special attempt on the landscape plan to screen those, uh, utilities that are on the building. And I would just ask, maybe in, in the final staff review, when the building department comes along, that, uh, we, you would encourage the, uh, the, the building-mounted utilities and things like that to be kind of around the corner, not facing Crosstown Circle, but rather facing the loading dock and screened appropriately as opposed to them being put on the street-side elevation because that room is in the corner.
We'll move to the public hearing. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for, against this project, please do so now. It's looking a little emptier. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, moved closed public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All right. All those in favor of closed public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Closed. Public hearing is closed. Further discussion or would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion if there's no further discussion.
Well, I just have one comment. I believe the city is still required to maintain or upkeep the area. Um, I drove past there this weekend and it looks like where the restaurant sits is being turned into like a dumping ground for junk. Chairs, et cetera.
Yes, um, we have a nightly security patrol that goes by there, but, um, we clear things out of there probably every week. Um, just because it is vacant. Um, it, you know, it hasn't, um, we clear it away and then someone remodels their bathroom and we get, you know, their water heater and their chairs. And, and so it is a constant battle that we're, that we're fighting. Um, we've turned over a key to the building, to the police department. Um, they used it for SWAT training and that kind of thing. So, we're kind of like trying to keep security to a maximum there. Um, we did offer the building to the fire department to burn it down and they actually turned that opportunity down because they thought the building was in such bad shape, um, inside that would be a hazard. Um, it's, it's a wood building and it's two stories. Um, so it would be a hazard to, to burn it down. So, but yeah, it is on our list of things we want to like, um, you know, it's, it's more efficient to tear the building down and build a new building all, all at once. Um, so that's really our goal and so we do want to break ground on this project as soon as possible.
Good deal. Thank you.
Commissioner Stinkus?
This seems like a refreshing revitalization of a very tired, old Japanese restaurant.
Yeah.
And an area used for parking. So, I laud you for coming up with this proposal. It's, it, your building is bright, it's gleaming, it will be an energy boost for that particular area.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
That, that restaurant was one of the few that was open when I originally moved in.
Yeah. When I went by there today, there was a child's bicycle there. I wondered, okay, this is becoming a neighborhood something, dumping area or something.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Moved to recommend approval for a planned unit development concept review on five acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on five acres, zoning change from OFC Rural and C-dash H-WI to industrial on five acres, site plan review on five acres, and preliminary plat of two parcels into one lot on five acres based on plan stamped dated June 3, 2021, and the staff report dated June 10, 2021.
Motion with Commissioner Kirk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second, Commissioner Mehdi. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? All right. Good luck moving forward with your project. Thank you for your presentation. Uh, Julie, any planners' reports this evening?
No, sir.
Any members' reports? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right. I'll second, second from Commissioner Stinkus. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Were adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Not as late as I.